This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District, I'm sorry, Board of Education Business Meeting for September 3rd, 2019. We welcome everybody back to the start of the new school year and the start of our meeting schedule with our first evening meeting of the year. To begin with this evening, as with all of our public meetings, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are with us here in person are welcome to address the board on any matter. We ask that you be brief and hold your comments to three minutes. Raise your hand, I will recognize you and ask you to step to the podium and give us your name and address. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the Board of Education? Seeing that we have none this evening because everyone's home getting ready for the first day of school is what we're all moving to probably. We will move forward then with our agenda this evening. Before we actually call for approval of our agenda, tonight we actually have two separate matters that require a public hearing be held. And they have to do with the approval of the Code of Conduct and also the approval of our safety plan. And we are going to hold, we'll provide information on both and then we're going to hold the actual public hearing on both to make that clear and concise. So I will turn it over to Dr. McGowan first to explain the order of business and the two, or actually, two items in particular, how we're approaching that this evening.
Sure, so each year you are required to hold an open public hearing and advertise it as such, which we did, on both the Code of Conduct and the school safety plan. They have to be adopted each year by you whether there are changes or not and open to community discussion if people are to come and ask questions. And so, seeing as though, does not appear as though we have any additional public comment about that.
They might come in.
They might come in. So after both the presentations, it would be good to stop for a moment and check if there's any other public comment as it is a hearing. But we are presenting both the Code of Conduct to you and the safety plan. First will be the Code of Conduct. The only change in the code this year, which will be explained to you, is around restorative practices. And Betsy Balling is here to walk us through essentially the plan for implementing restorative practices in the district. And Tom and Rob are also here to talk to you then about how that is incorporated into the code for this upcoming year. The second piece is on the safety plan and Lou will be giving you an overview of the safety plan. That is really updated regularly as we work with law enforcement and the Safety Committee, but he'll give an overview, a general overview of the plan and then again, open enough to questions after that.
Great, and I will take the opportunity to remind folks at home, again, this being our first meeting of the year, if you happen to be watching us this evening or watching us at a later date on our YouTube channel, that you can access all the video from the board meetings through the website. All of the material for tonight's meeting is contained on the website under the Board of Education tab, under Meetings and Agendas. And all of this material that we're about to review is contained there. And certainly, the Code of Conduct and our safety plan, the portion of the safety plan that is a public plan, will all be posted prominently on the website for access by all of our residents and students. So with that, we first are going to have Tom, Rob and Betsy present.
Yep.
Welcome that group tonight on the Restorative Practices presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me here today to talk about restorative practices. And, oh, Tom, Rob are going to up here with me, great. So I've learned a lot about restorative practices in the last year and I want to talk to you a little bit about the journey that our district has been on. We have a lot of people who've learned a lot about restorative practices. It's been really exciting. And I put our little motto on there, "Every child, every day, every way," because this is something that could really be impactful to so many students as we go forward. And we have a magical day tomorrow with the first day of school and so it's a perfect time to talk about this. So, restorative practices, I just wanted to give everyone a brief overview. Partners in Restorative Initiatives, PURI, you'll hear that a lot in this presentation and that's the group that we're working with. And they've done a lot of our training. It was established in 1998 by Will Bontrager and it uses different strategies and circles to build relationships, build community and repair harm in schools, communities and the justice system. And we've been able to experience a lot of those circles in this training. It's been really neat. The benefits of restorative practices, there are so many, but here are just a few. To build and strengthen relationships, to repair harm, to restore peace to families and communities, to reduce violence and to promote healing. And that last part is so important because we want to make sure that when different things are happening and there's turmoil going on, that the people involved feel good about going back into the environment. And that's our ultimate goal. So I wanted to just talk to you a little bit about how this came up. In August of 2018, BHS decided, one of their initiatives was to learn more about restorative practices. So they took a year and did a lot of research. They had PURI present to them, members from PURI present to them. And then in April of 2019, the conference day, the teachers were able to observe students engaged in a community circle. This had a great impact on the faculty. And so we decided as a district that we wanted to go forward and dedicate more of our resources to having more people here in our district trained. So there was a three-day training and there were two opportunities for that. One was in June of 2019 and we had 20 teachers, administrators and teaching assistants trained. I can, I'm proud to say that I was part of that and it was an amazing experience. You sit about, think about going through a training for three solid days and to think about it ahead of time, it's like, holy smokes, we're going to be sitting here for a long time. It didn't feel like that at all. There was so much community that was built with that and I knew that the next group would feel the same. And so, at the end of July, August of 2019, we had 22 more people that were trained, again, teachers, administrators and teaching assistants. And I know from, because I sat in on the second group's training for one of the parts of the day, that their circles were going very similarly to the way that ours did. We then had a one-day training at PURI in July and August where we had 23 members of our administration and mental health staff trained. And most of the people who went through that training had had some experience with restorative practices before. So they were able to go in there in a day and do a lot of the things that people did in the three-day training. And then there was, as part of the district professional day trainings, Kim Ball and Hennessy Lustica led 20 teachers through an overview of restorative practices. And that was all based on interest, so the teachers could sign up for it simply based on the fact that they wanted to learn more about it. So what we learned and the most powerful thing that I learned and the greatest takeaway for me and I can say for most of the people that attended the training, was that the tier-one community building circles is where we really need to focus. That's what we need to start with, that's what's most important. It's proactive, it's about trust and relationship building. You develop that social capital and social discipline and without that, you can't keep going up. The next layer there, the tier-two problem-solving circles and then restorative conferencing, but we really haven't gotten into that yet. We want to start with the community building circles that would also include academic circles and it would be a level that people are really comfortable with, hopefully, as we go forward. So at the Blue Report meeting in June, we did a great deal of brainstorming and there were so many ideas that were thrown out, but four of the key takeaways that we had that we talked about, number one was implementation. You know, a lot of people were asking, "How long is this going to take?" We're thinking it would be a three-to-five-year plan. Eventually, we would like to have training for all staff at some level. We want to involve students, parents and of course, the Brighton community. And we want to make sure that this is sustainable. And as far as initial implementation goes, I think we've come a long way so far in a really short time. We'll be having additional training at PURI on September 18th. And this training will be a "Train the Trainer" day. So members of the groups that were trained during that three-day, those three-day sessions will be attending. And then we will also have people that were trained in the one-day or three-day come and join that group for at least two hours. And during that time, we will be planning the Superintendent's Conference Day on October 11th. And that's where we plan on rolling out restorative practices and introducing it to the district. We have established a district level and building level committees for restorative practices, so all the buildings have committees. And we are going to continue to work with PURI and build our internal capacity. And then at the bottom bullet there is the addition of restorative practices belief statement in the district Code of Conduct. This is something that we put together and it was based, it's adapted from the first few pages of the Community Building Circles booklet from PURI. And I just want to turn this over to Dr. Halliwell, I think was going to talk a little bit about it.
Thanks. So this particular statement, which we have included in the high school handbook, actually, Betsy was charged with creating the initial draft. Then we had our entire leadership team review it, all the principals, administrative team, to add in a few other pieces to it. And basically, this will be a part of the Code of Conduct prior to any of the disciplinary consequences that could be levied upon a student if there's infraction of the Code of Conduct. And it talks about that, you know, in terms of restorative practices can be implemented, will be implemented in conjunction with traditional-type discipline or in lieu of. But to just put out there for everybody, typically, when you are working through the community building after an event that would be breaking of the Code of Conduct, it might be more of a major event, that you would have the ability to have a circle, not necessarily a community-type circle or get-together, but more of a closed circle with the particular students who are involved, maybe the staff that were involved, and someone who's facilitating that, who wasn't really a part of that situation. To work through so that the student who, you know, might be in trouble, there's a consequence, but we also want to make sure that that student feels comfortable and welcomed back into our community after the issue is over. Or as part of that, and maybe in doing the restorative practice, that will determine how much of a particular consequence someone might get if we can work through a situation with this and hopefully get the behavior to change or certainly not to have it happen again. We've dabbled in this throughout the last several years. We did more meetings just with counselors, administrators last year for the high school. But I think as we go into K-12, that's going to be something obviously that Betsy talked about, should be overseeing this process. We're excited about the October day and getting every single staff member trained in at least what is this and how are we going to help implement that with our disciplinary practices and just good practice in general. So, are there any questions?
So, we're having much better conversations, for one. We are digging deeper with kids in a different way than we ever have been before. And instead of administering a disciplined set of practices and policies that provides just a consequence, and not that we're ever in a place where the assistant principals, counselors, teachers in fact, weren't having good conversations, but this type of model pushes us to a place where it's not just treating a discipline, but rather it's changing a behavior over time and developing a better relationship, which creates in the long-term a much better disciplinary situation. And really excited about the way that's opening doors and the connections to mental health along the way too, and the way this really, from a really K-12 level and thinking about our younger kids too, is developing a much better vocabulary on how we feel about situations and how to repair damage when it's done and prevent that from happening going forward. So, did a great job, we're off to a really great start and excited about what the future holds. Any more questions or any question?
Any questions or comments?
I guess I'd just like to say that it seems like a small thing to insert a paragraph, but codifying our use of restorative practices is a big step forward for any district and I'm glad to see us do it.
No doubt. The place where controversy comes sometimes with this and in other places has been around the idea that, well, are you just going to sit around and talk about things or is there a consequence to an act? And this is the right balance for us between those two pieces, that there are consequences and choices have consequences, we know that. But just walking away, you know, with a consequence administered doesn't necessarily change the behavior going forward. It doesn't get at what's really happening here and what is the reason, what's the underlying reason for those behaviors? And just the preventative notion of having much more authentic dialogues. We saw great conversations, several of us who saw restorative practices well instituted in New York City public schools. I think we had shared with you earlier in the year when we presented about kids at the kindergarten level, talking about how they felt and, you know, their emotions in a way, at a much deeper level than most adults we know. And so, we think there's just huge potential for this to have an impact across what we do.
And it's interesting to think about the work that Council Rock has done with Habits of Mind and where that fits together as we begin to implement this in our primary building as well and throughout our grays. We're developing a common language for students and for faculty to use and hopefully for families too. And I think that Habits of Mind has a great place in thinking about those community building circles. How we think about our feelings, our actions, what consequences arise from those. I just think they fit naturally together.
Right. You're absolutely right. And we implemented a mental health curriculum last year, K-5, and this fits perfectly with that. And the Habits of Mind conversation, that is so powerful of Council Rock. I turned to Nicole, who's a person there who does this so well. And now we're seeing how that will scaffold and start to build throughout the system. These are all very related concepts. So some of the vocabulary might be different, but the concept of thinking about how we think and thinking about our emotions and being able to express those and have a dialogue about those, that's common across all three of those ones.
I think it's also important for people to understand that this doesn't just happen, it takes a lot of work to get to the point where we can be effective across all four of our buildings. It's a lot of training and a lot of hard work on the part of our staff before we can start to implement it with our students.
You know, that's a great point and it does point to also, Jolene, and by way of thanking Rob and Tom and Betsy, this work goes back a couple of years. And I know PURI and the work leading up to where we are right now, but we all participated a few times last year in the restorative circle effort. And we know that, especially the high school, middle school folks, have been implementing and using and training along the way to get us to the point we are now at to begin to roll this out district-wide. You're right, it was, it's not something that just, you know, we brought one group in, trained us a little bit and boom, it's all set. It's an ongoing and building process. And we appreciate your efforts as leaders and everybody's commitment, K-5, to make it happen and make it work, so.
You know, we had, so we mentioned the examples from the New York City public schools and we have had people here trained in all different levels from different experiences that they've had or their own background. And knew this worked really well also. But I do remember, it was probably a year and a half ago, Tom, when we met with East High School and learned a great deal from them and a very powerful meeting with the work that they're doing there also. And so I think that was a great model for us to think about, how do we move forward? And it has taken them several years to scaffold this type of work, train everybody and get to that place. But it's just, again, huge upside to it and really creating great conversations with our kids and parents.
Well, thank you. We didn't get, part of what we're doing this evening is continuing that commitment as part, thank you, this review. And we expect here momentarily to prove it as a permanent addition to the Code of Conduct, which is reviewed and updated every year and then let the work commence this year on all the further development that they outlined in their slides. Are there any members of the public here this evening who wish to comment at all on the plan? No one filled our room since we started the meeting, so I guess we're ready to move on. Any further, well, let's ask for a motion, first of all, a motion please, to approve the Code of Conduct, including the Restorative Practice section as we've seen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Karen. Anything further to comment on or questions or board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, we want to talk this evening about the safety plan and we're going to bring up Lou Alimo. As we mentioned, as Kevin mentioned, the safety plan, the district-wide safety plan has to be approved every year as a matter of course. It's something that I'm proud to be the board member on the district-wide Safety Committee. Many of the elements of the safety plan are something that we talk about constantly within that committee. And then further, Lou and John McCabe and all of our first responders locally work on constantly. So I will turn it over to you, Lou, to provide an update on that.
Good evening. So what I'm presenting tonight is just the framework of the district-wide safety plan that's required as part of the SAVE legislation. The Safety Committee, as Mr. Kofanovich had said, has been working on the details within the district-wide safety plan over the last couple of years. There's state templates prepared by the state police who actually reviews and approves our district-wide safety plan. So it's very much a boilerplate where you plug in your district-specific information. So I'm just going to walk you through that as part of the presentation this evening. So the guiding principles of the district-wide safety plan are summarized here. So the planning should be comprehensive, encompassing the activities from early prevention through crisis response. So just listening to the team's presentation, we probably should be amending this to reflect our initiative for restorative practices as a prevention strategy. So things like that that are consequential, that's why this should be a live document and we should always be looking at the strategies and the plans that are encompassed in this plan. The plan should be widely disseminated, hence the public hearing tonight. So I'll present the overview of the plan. It'll be available for comment. Any of the comments should be directed to my attention and then I present those to the Safety Committee and we process those recommendations or suggested edits. Plan should clearly define the roles and responsibilities. Now, this is the district-wide safety plan, it's not the building-specific safety plans which are more private. And that's what the building teams administered by the building principals work very diligently on. This is more of the overarching plans, it's more of the high-level checklist items so you can refer to and then execute more specific, more specific plans. And as I said before, they should be continually reviewed and updated as new initiatives come in, as new hazards are identified or threats are identified. It's our responsibility to go back and to update this plan and then present that to the public as well. So here is the format, there's the introduction section, which I just really summarized. Then there's Section 2, which is Risk Reduction, Prevention and Intervention, Response Planning, Recovery, the Annual Review Requirement and then the appendices. So just summarizing the Risk Reduction, Prevention and Intervention, I just wanted to highlight a few things that are included in the plan. It's the training requirements, what we look at as an administrative leadership team on an annual basis. How do we touch on these important training concepts and how do we deliver those to all staff members? Then we look at our other systems and that's, you'll see how we redefine the blueprint this year is to have a more focus on our systems. Some of those systems include our reporting tools. And one of the important tool that we rely on is the Safe Schools Helpline. And we're always urging people to participate and to report something that they're hearing or seeing. And there is prompt follow-up using that tool. Our visitor management system, what do we have is the single point of entry and visitor management throughout the school day and after-school hours. It's been an important focus of our blueprint work over the last couple of years as well. Child pickup procedures. And then we get into the threat assessment pieces, behavior threat assessments and hazard identification. And then those loop back into the training requirements. So we consider those as we're developing our training for the year. Moving then into the response, and again, the response at the buildings is not part of the district-wide plans, those are part of the building-level safety plans, which are not available for public comment, excuse me, but are worked on internally. So we talk about in the district-wide safety plan, the identification, the preparation, the compilation of equipment and supplies, how we're going to use those, how we're going to be prepared to deploy those. We talk about notification and activation of the emergency response system. So the four key areas, the lockout, lockdown, evacuate, shelter. So how do we know what to do when we're asked to do it in any type of emergency situation? Then, once we are in an emergency situation, the activation of the incident command system, our administrative team knowing what their role is and the backup roles, those are specifically identified in the building-level safety plans. But at any given point, somebody would have to assume the role as an incident commander, it may not be the building principal. So all of our administrators and teacher leaders in the building need to be prepared to assume any role given, you know, a variety of circumstances. And then certainly our relationship, something we always are so proud of here in Brighton is our relationship with our first responders, Brighton Police Department, Brighton Ambulance, the Fire Department. Just have a great relationship with them, great partnership with them. They all participate on our district safety committee. And this talks about our, in fact, partnership with them and how we rely on one another. Recovery, begins to talk about this. I found a visual that summarizes this portion of the safety plan. It's essentially all the action planning and how do we recover from an incident, reunification procedures, some of the training that we did this summer as a leadership team, going through that. We also have supplemental plans for cybersecurity incident recovery and then other recovery plans that are separate from the district-wide safety plan. And then lastly, the important appendices, the Safety Committee representatives. I did not list the parent representatives on there. So if there's any communication to the parent representatives, that would go through the Safety Committee. All the other important, critical contact information, references to county poison control, for instance, all the emergency telephone numbers, emergency information forms. And then there's also guidance on specific threats and hazards, the civil authority notification for telephone threats. So if there was a bomb threat, provides guidance on what to do in that. Building risk determinations and hazards, a triage of the hazard assessments for each of our buildings, guidance in there for the incident command model and then other guidance offered by the CDC for risk and protection factors. So that's a summary of the district-wide safety plan. Happy to entertain any questions. John McCabe says his regrets, he fell ill this afternoon, so he wasn't able to join me in the presentation this evening.
Fine, thank you, Lou. Does anybody have any questions or comments or thoughts? Thank you for the updates and...
I know Lou said this at the beginning, but such a valuable aspect to this plan development and it has won the attention paid by our administrators and our staff, Lou overseeing this, but the relationship with law enforcement is key to this and we work very, very closely with them to continue to think about ways we can protect our children and the adults that we're also promised to and committed to protecting each day when they come here and leave their families to come to work as well. So thanks, Lou, for that work and for heading this up and to our law enforcement professionals to be a partner in this. Very, very helpful.
That's a very good point, Kevin. And the other, the one other thing too that strikes me, I just wanted to reemphasize, Lou mentioned it, I mentioned it earlier, that the district-wide safety plan that we've taken a look at, we have copies, will be posted on the website. But there are sections of that plan that are specific to each building and each facility that are not publicly shared by practice and procedure. So that there are certain elements of information and preparedness issues with regard to the district and first responders that just would not be prudent to share with the general public in an effort to keep everybody safe all the time. So those elements are worked on also. I wouldn't want any members of the public to take a look at it and think we're missing things. We, I can tell you that we spent a lot of time on it, our people do, it's well-covered, it's well-contained, well-detailed and it's constantly being evaluated and looked at, so.
So they accept that there is observations for improvement, please send those along, board members, community members. We want this to be a document we're proud of, certainly that complies, but something we can really rely on. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Again, any members of the public? We've established that there are no members of the public here this evening, so I guess there's no comment further. Board members, anything further on our safety plan at all?
Just thank you for the good work.
Question, comment?
Just thank you.
I'm happy to be here at the committee. I mean, the folks who are devoted to this work, work very hard on it, at it all the time. And again, one thing, that relationship that we have with all of our local first responders is so valuable. And the information that they bring to the table from their work, state and nationally, you know, because they're all parts of that training that's done at the state and the national level too. So it's just a great partnership all the way around and we hope and we work as hard as we can to ensure that every day is safe, so. Then a motion please to approve the safety plan for this year?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Andrea. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, now that we have those two out of the way formally, we will ask for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Larry. Any questions or further additions? Well, you both said it, it was tied with Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Marv, a motion for approval of the minutes from the August 13th, 2019 Board of Education meeting. Thank you, sir. Seconded by Jolene. Does anyone have any questions or additions or corrections to those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is a business meeting this evening, so we have a report section, although most of these, from our standpoint, relatively brief because everything's just getting rolling. Board of Education reports, this three Monroe County School Board standing committees all begin here over the next few weeks, Legislative Committee actually being in all begin here over the next few weeks, Legislative Committee actually being tomorrow, and I think I shared with the board, I've agreed to co-chair the Legislative Committee this year for MCSBA, so we begin that tomorrow. Labor Relations...
September 25th, and it's going to be effective sharing of strategies for moving staff to high deduction plans, medical plans.
Okay.
Scott Koval and company are going to...
That's right, I did see that, that should be interesting. That is the 25th, correct, you said?
Yep.
And then Information Exchange?
We're meeting on Wednesday, September 11th, and at 4:00, so that's a change.
Yeah, reminder, anybody that's going to attend is for...
And the topic is understanding anxiety.
And again, a reminder that there are a few of those Information Exchange meetings this year that are going to be at 4:00, so those that like to attend those, just keep an eye out when we get the reminders, so. All right, thank you. Marv, anything new to report yet from BOSI's?
No, their first meeting of the year is going to be, or the first meeting of the school year is going to be this Thursday, so.
Okay, great. Any other, we usually do other board member reports, we sort of highlight our individual activities, as we're just getting started with most of the things. Does anybody have anything they want to share from the summer work or recent work?
Just that, you may not be aware, but we have construction projects going on in the school.
I've heard that, yes.
I'll continue to highlight the great work being done by our buildings people, Lou,
obviously, with John, Rob, Kevin, all those guys. We meet about every other Monday and catch up with those teams, and they're sometimes exciting, and we learned some things, but just phenomenal work being done, all the schools are safe, they're going to be great, but we're going to be in a construction mode for the next couple of years, because you may also have heard, we have full decay coming in the fall.
Yes, I heard that also, but it does occur to remind, and when we get to Dr. McGowan's superintelligence report, I believe he's going to cover that again also to reinforce where we are on that. So thank you, Larry, and again, thank you for serving on that committee for us and providing us the weekly updates that you do on construction schedules, so.
There is an Upstate Institute Executive Committee on September 17th, used to be the Genesee Valley School Board, so.
So that's a formal name change?
Upstate Institute, yeah, last year.
I didn't realize they did that.
Yep.
Okay, I know there was discussion of that, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, I guess we've got that covered. For our Brighton Teachers Association, we have a new representative this year, so we're welcoming Nicole to our group this year, and thank you.
Thank you. So VTA members are excited to be back at school, ready to work with students, teachers, nurses, ASI has participated in variety of professional development during the summer, actually did the restorative practices myself, and it was awesome. VTA is looking forward to participating in homecoming this Saturday and marching, and we're looking forward to a great year. Don't have too much to do yet, but next time you will probably be a lot longer.
All the activity will accumulate, yeah. Well, thank you very much, and again, welcome to your role, we appreciate that. And returning in her role, Leslie, representing the PTSA, and thank you for coming.
Thanks, Mark. PTSA has been busy selling calendars at some of the back-to-school events. We are also selling them at ours market this year, which has been very successful so far. We are going to be selling spirit wear at the Food Truck Rodeo and Homecoming this year with a few new items. We have stadium seats, recycle bags, and a lanyard, along with our t-shirts and sweatshirts. We really wanted to offer products in all different price ranges, starting from $5 to $30. We are changing the structure of our PTS meeting, PTSA meetings this year, so our morning meetings will be more traditional business meetings, where we will also have Dr. McGowan speak on a specific topic, and we will have three scheduled evening meetings, where we will invite a speaker to come and speak on a topic affecting all of our children. We are hoping that our October 1st meeting will be Matt Tapping speaking about the habits of mine. In February, we are having a noon lunch and learn meeting with a special speaker, stay tuned for more details. We have appointed a parent volunteer in each of our buildings to be a new family liaison. This person is the point of contact for new families to that building and is available to meet up or have a phone conversation, and not only answer questions and navigate them through the building, but answer questions regarding the town of Brighton. They reach out to them periodically to make sure they know of upcoming events and to make sure they are being included in town, social and school activities. We also have appointed Crystal Ellis to help us start up and create a diversity equity committee. She's already starting communication with Debbie Baker to make sure that the PTSA and district committee is working together on these initiatives and making sure communication between us stays fluid.
Wonderful. And Food Truck Rodeo, tomorrow night, of course, as we mentioned, tomorrow's opening day of school. Food Truck Rodeo tomorrow, the times?
I think it's 5:00 to 8:00.
5:00 to 8:00.
5:00 to 8:00, okay. We want to make sure that we get word out, that was, that's been wonderful.
Yes, it's been fun community gathering.
Okay, so hopefully weather will be good, and lots of folks can come out tomorrow night, 5:00 to 8:00, and celebrate back-to-school, food trucks, and everybody else.
72 and probably sunny, isn't it?
72 and probably sunny, can't beat that.
Jolene, it's just guaranteed the weather.
Yes, they're replacing our...
Chief meteorologist also. Dr. McGowan, your report.
My night to cook tomorrow night, sounds perfect. We are ready to go, really, really excited, and just hats off to, as Larry mentioned, our buildings around, people, John Belli, Rob Lewis, Kevin Geisel, and Lou leading the way, working with campus construction, and everybody to, number one, on the construction side of things, to get it to a point where we're ready to safely open and well-equipped, and it's difficult to do that, it's a massive undertaking, as Larry has described, a generational project, and so this was big to be ready for today, and then the rest of the things that normally happen to open up in terms of cleaning the buildings had to also happen, and as I walked around on Monday, in fact, you know, Labor Day, there's a whole lot of labor happening here and people getting ready, and staff members in the building as well, you know, still putting things back together, so thank you for all of that. You know, food service is ready, transportation is ready, and teachers are ready, and teacher aides, assistants, nurses. It was really exciting to be in buildings today and have kids check out their new classroom and be thrilled about it. Interestingly, at Council Rock, and Larry mentioned this, about a construction zone, most adults would walk through and notice that there's drywall covering a lot of areas that there's construction, the entire front of the building, the cafeterias, and the old kitchen, you can only see the back wall of them, everything else is gutted, and it is a construction zone. Yet, when you're in the building, and you're walking through the building, in the eyes of children, it's not noticeable. Kids walk in their classroom, and within those four walls, that magic still happens. It's safe, it's clean, it actually sparkled today, it looked fantastic, you know that there's work going on, you know we're living through renovation, but at the same time, it's ready to go, and it's a really great environment for kids, and all the accommodations that could possibly be made have been made, and our staff has made that happen, so we're in a really good place. Adults will likely see it more than kids, but even today, the adults that were there, you know, I think people know we're under construction, that is what it is, but seem to feel really good about it and what's coming, so it's exciting. Homecoming, so a lot of these pieces have already been mentioned, 10:30 at 12 Corners, of course, and the parade steps off at 12:45, lineup at 12 at the church, and then, of course, the football game immediately to follow that, and there's lots of different events, lots of other athletic events happening also throughout the week. Our student rep, Theo, couldn't be here tonight, the soccer team plays tonight, there's opening nights for just about everything happening, so we're really excited for the kids, and they've been back, many kids have been back now for two weeks. We had 560 kids come out for athletic teams at the high school, and our enrollment, by the way, is also up to the same point it was, was it 10 years ago, Tom? Never mind, Dr. Halsing, gross, and another...
He's busy with opening day details, man.
He's contemplating schedules and making changes and finding lockers, 47 lockers short for freshmen tomorrow because of just construction pieces, but again, all those things have been accommodated. What's that?
15.
Down to 15, great. Actually, I was talking about enrollment, though, so we're at the same place that we were 10 years ago, right, or just off by a couple of kids?
12, 23, tied, 12, 23, 5.
Right, so we're very, very close. So when you hear about schools that are dropping enrollment, we're not in that place. I know we usually talk about that during the budget, but, you know, clearly it's a place that...
We've got another big class that'll come in next year too, right, because 2023 is the beginning of the bubble.
Yes.
And the one behind is...
Right. Well, yeah, and so this year's freshmen, actually, 23 are, yes, a huge...
Right, so we're going to replace 2020, which is average, with the much bigger class in 2024.
Correct, correct. And we have full decay coming in 2021, so we will have enrollment jump district-wide.
What's that happen?
Well, it is interesting, Kevin, you mentioned that, I just thought of it when you said that, but there've been a couple of articles written this summer about the declining enrollment New York statewide, outside of New York City, but the interesting point, if you click on any of those stories and look at some of the lists and maps, Brighton is the only school district in Monroe County that has had a net gain over the last 10 years. We've gained, I think it's approximately 10 a year, it's 100 and some odd students we've gained in 10 years. The only other one in the greater area is Victor, who's had a net gain, everyone else has had a net loss in students.
Victor's actually growing in housing.
Yeah, it's a little different situation down there, but they are a growing area, but that is interesting, we continue to do that. You're right, we will have a spike, obviously, with full decay too.
So we had a great start to the day, a couple of quick pieces I'd point out, one, what came out over the summer was the latest NIT rate game. We don't really harp on these rankings with you or, you know, do big celebrations, because they're all different, they look at different things, but our schools were ranked very, very highly, so if people are interested in checking that out, they should. But more important than that were the numbers we shared with our staff today about our graduation rate, our graduation rate for all kids, the number of kids taking AP courses. We've closed so many gaps for kids in our community from different groups, demographic groups, underrepresented groups in our community, and our graduation rate is the highest it has ever been. So we start the year on a really high note, with our kids doing really, really well, lots of success, again, lots of excitement around the project, but a lot of work to prepare for a great year ahead, so we're thrilled to have everybody come back through the door tomorrow. As I probably semi-obnoxiously reminded people in a voicemail, the parents tonight, this is like all the great holidays rolled into one the night before, or life events, it's really exciting for us to...
One of the busiest weeks of the year, the first week of the year, really.
That's right, with homecoming as well.
We'll get used to it right off the bat.
And really, the theme today was every child, every day, every way, which is what emerged from the blueprint conversation as a motto that we will continue to focus on and talk about. This really is, you know, as I said to the staff, both aspirational, but certainly attainable, because in so many ways, that's already reflective of what our staff does and how they approach their work. Again, the reason why we're seeing all that success in closing gaps for different groups of kids, because our staff focuses on every child, every day, in every different way they need to, and so we're really excited to keep thinking about that. And other than that, I would just say, enjoy your pictures tomorrow morning, and be patient, because remember, if your bus is rolling a couple of seconds late, it's because somebody was taking the perfect picture, or several, at the stop before, and you will likely do the same. So we will get kids home to and from schools quickly and sufficiently, but more importantly, as safely as possible. First couple of days, we're running out the kinks, but transportation is really well-prepared, we don't expect there to be any significant issues. We just always remind people, be patient, be friendly, and we're happy to return the favor and certainly be there for your kids, but everybody wants to take their pictures, so it'll go great.
Get a good night's sleep, and eat a good breakfast.
That's right. Get a good night's sleep, enjoy the night, and we can't wait.
The beginning of the year, we always have the first day or so of those type of things.
You got it.
Thank you, Dr. McGowan.
Suri is ready to start school too.
All right, I, next up, I need to double-check, I think I made a mistake, didn't we move on our agenda, it still shows us, but I thought we moved the budget guideline, budget calendar to the second meeting in September? Am I wrong? Or was it, is it somewhere? We don't actually have it.
I don't have a document.
Let's move it to the next one.
Because I thought we were going to do that, and I forgot to ask, and I just saw it when I saw it on here, when I flipped the page.
Although Dr. Baker wanted us to focus on this immediately.
I would think it's not much change than from our usual custom, but for some reason, I thought we were going to move it to the next meeting.
There's no reason why we can't do that.
Isn't the budget calendar 12 months a year?
The budget calendar is a permanent thing, I don't know why, but no, technically, we have approval still.
Yes, but we can do that the next meeting.
You sure?
Yep, positive.
All right, we'll do that the next, we're not missing anything, Lou's working on it anyway, and Debbie's working on it.
I'm puzzled, that's why. That's right. But you do it.
We don't have a document.
Debbie says no problem, let's wait.
Okay.
Dr. Baker, two more weeks to talk about curriculum. You're good.
So let me just ask, just to be clear, let's just ask for a motion, please, to amend that then, to drop items seven to the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we had that, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, then we have four policy items for this evening. First up, please, a motion for approval. We have two first reads, and again, I remind folks, maybe starting to watch our board meetings on a regular basis now that we're into September, policy work, the entirety of the district policy manual is posted on the website, it's under the Board of Education tab, and it is indexed there, and you can find all the different policies listed and by subject or number. Our procedure is to bring forward first reads on policy amendments, changes, new policies, we have conversation, they're internally vetted and reviewed, any further questions from the public or internally are dealt with, and then they come back for a second read at a future meeting, and after the second read, they become part of policy. So tonight, we have two first reads, policy, may we have a motion, please, for the first read on policy 7110 under students, and it is under comprehensive student attendance?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Jolene and seconded by Larry. This is a first read, as we mentioned, it's reflected in change of law around student attendance, and it has to do with audits that the Office of the State Controller and SED weighed on with regard to reporting data in the area of chronic absenteeism, which is not something that we run into a lot, but it has to be part of our district policy, so that's what the rationale is around that. No formal additional internal reviews on that one are necessary. At this point in time, Debbie and our principals have looked through that. Does anyone have any questions regarding that tonight? All right, then if we do, further bring that forward prior to second read. All in favor then of that policy?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then a motion, please, to approve first read of policy 7511, again, of students, immunization of students?
So moved.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Christina. And as we all know, any of us, you read the newspapers or follow the news, that the immunization of students has had a major change in law in New York State, and the religious exemption has been fully eliminated in New York State, and this is a reflection of that change and the law as it's changed and has been reviewed internally by Carolyn and also by the district physician. Any further questions or comments on that?
Dr. McGowan, is there anything that you need to comment on at all? No, just that we notified families in June, the law was passed by the legislature...
In a very specific timeline, correct?
Correct. Law was passed by the legislature late in the session, but it was vigorously debated and well-publicized relative to the legislature's work, and we notified people immediately with a timeline and a letter written by our school physician explaining exactly what had to happen, and so parents have been well notified of that. There is a short timeframe as the year starts, they're aware of that timeframe, and it's a little bit different depending on children and what their doctor and what their reason for not being immunized might be. In other words, there could be health reasons that require a different pace for those immunizations happening, but essentially ballpark within 14 days, that has to happen for everybody. So our issue is not, just to be clear with people, this is not an option.
Right. It's not our issue, it's New York State law.
Correct, and all we are doing is following what the law, it tells us we have to follow, we don't have a choice, and it's a public health issue, very strongly endorsed by our Health Commissioner, and we will follow the law, and we're very close with our school physician to manage that, and with individual families that need us to work with them on that.
Great, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we have two other policies here for second read that we had previously gone through first read and been approved. A motion, please, for approval of second read on policy 5140, non-instructional business operations, administration of the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv and seconded by Karen. This is a basic change in education law that effectively changes the date of the required statement of total funding allocation for schools in the district. As we previously discussed, this is the first year that the policy, or the law, really around the reporting that the district must do on allocation to each individual school building gets into place for all school districts in New York State, and then there was a change on the actual date of the required statement, so that puts this into our policy also. Any further questions or comment on that, anybody?[1756.54] All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then a motion for second read approval, please, policy 7221, a student's policy, early graduation and participation in graduation ceremonies and activities.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Larry, seconded by Jolene, and again, we, this was in addition to Commissioner Regulation, and it is a required policy, and essentially it provides head provision for the district to prohibit students who may, prohibit students from participating in graduation ceremonies related and related activities as a consequence of violating a district's school code of conduct. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Two other quick items of business this evening, rather formal, a motion, please, for the, to approve the resolution as prepared to establish petty cash funds for concession stands for the school year.
So moved.
Second.
Approved, or a motion by Karen, seconded by Andrea, as you can see by the reading, it's pretty self-explanatory, just establishes that fund, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then also a motion, please, for approval of a education law, section 9113 resolution with regard to a particular employee.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jolene and seconded by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then finally, this evening, a motion, please, to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Christina.
And I need to abstain from voting for the personnel agenda because it involves a family member of mine.
Okay, you're right, your daughter's listed as one of the life parents, correct?
A lifeguard.
Okay, so...
Gainfully employed.
All right, let's do that then, a motion...
Why are we separating them?
We can separate them out, yeah. Let's, let's make a motion, a motion to approve the consent agenda specifically with item A, approval of personnel changes, that motion with Karen abstaining. So I, let's get a motion first for that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One.
Thank you. Now a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Moved by Jolene.
Second.